Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the session of Quispamcis Town Council. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Just waiting to get our computers up and running. It's been moved by Councilor Biggar, seconded by Councilor Thompson on the question. Please vote now. Are we at the running?
Well, we're, we're getting a little...
Okay. Could you show by, show of hands, please, those in favor? Okay, thank you. Non-opposed, motion carried unanimously. And I'd like the record to show that Deputy Mayor Schreier is, is with us tonight virtually. So, welcome Deputy Mayor.
Councilor Donovan is not here at this time, but he will be running a little bit late.
Councilor Miller. He's coming through the door. So we have a post late. Good evening, Councilor Miller. Could I have the treaty acknowledgement, please, with Councilor Luck? Would you please do that? Sorry, didn't give you a heads up on that.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispamcis exists on the traditional territory of the Wielisdewic, Malacite, and Micmac people, whose ancestors, along with the Pasmaquoddy tribes, assigned peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. We would also like to take the mo, this moment to reflect on our solidarity and support for the people of Ukraine, acknowledging that Canada has the third-largest Ukrainian population in the world, behind Ukraine itself and Russia. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. Maybe work, maybe, may we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. My comments this evening. I hope everyone had an opportunity to enjoy the extended weekend with the Family Day holiday yesterday. I know there were many people who participated in the Fundy Winterfest activities around our community and around the region, particularly at the Cuplex with the skating. The Fundy Winterfest runs through till March 13th, with many opportunities to be active this winter. So be sure to check out the Winterfest Facebook page for more information on activities here in Quispamcis and around the region. Every year on February 22nd, Girl Guides celebrate World Thinking Day, a day of international friendship. It is an opportunity to speak out on issues that affect girls and young women, celebrate the founding of Girl Guides, and be connected to the 10 million members around the world who are part of the Guiding Movement. In recognition of Girl Guides and World Thinking Day, the town of Quispamcis will join other municipalities across Canada in lighting up the Town Hall in Guiding Blue tomorrow evening. Here in New Brunswick, in Prince Edward Island, we have hundreds of girls and women who are members of Girl Guides of Canada. We have Girl Guide programs in nearly every community, and our Girl Guide volunteers light up their communities year-round through leadership, community service, and efforts to create a better world by girls. Blue lights will return to the Town Hall on March 3rd as we raise awareness about colorectal cancer in Canada. Colorectal cancer is one of the most commonly diagnosed cancers in Canada. The Canadian Cancer Society estimated that more than 24,000 people were diagnosed with colorectal cancer in 2022. Anyone over the age of 50 is strongly encouraged to get screened as soon as possible. If you have a family member who was diagnosed with colorectal cancer, it is important that you get diagnosed within the period of 20 years younger than that person. So someone that was diagnosed at 50, when you turn 30, you should, you should be screened by a medical doctor. Home tests are also available at physicians' offices, and if early diagnosed, colorectal cancer can be successfully treated. As part of Colorectal Cancer Canada's Dress in Blue initiative, Town Hall will be lit with blue lights on March 3rd. We've been fortunate in our region recently to enjoy some unseasonably warm temperatures, and that has led to many people being outside and taking advantage of our trail system and local amenities. But I'd like to remind you that dogs are required to be on leashes at all times when on town property. Animals are not permitted on our sports fields. So we encourage people and pets to use our trails, but pets must always be on a leash. In my case, I think my dog believes I'm the one on the leash. So no matter how you see it, you and your dog should be tethered to one another. So please enjoy the great outdoors, and we will move on now with our agenda for this evening. I'm looking for a disclosure of interests. Seeing that there are none, we will go to presentations. Item 5A, FCM Asset Management Plan Phase 2, presentation by R.V. Anderson with the consultants here online, virtually. And I'd also like to say that our town treasurer, Krista Brandon, is also visiting with us virtually. So do we have Alex Mason? Hello, Alex, welcome to our Town Council this evening here in Quispamcis, and you may begin your presentation.
Awesome, okay. I will share my screen. Hopefully, everyone can hear me all right.
Yes, we can, Alex, thank you.
Is that screen visible?
Yes, it is.
Great, okay, thank you. I'll get started then. Thanks, everyone, for having me. My name's Alex Mason. I am a project manager with R.V. Anderson Associates. I was a key contributor on this project, as well as some others with Quispamcis, and the goal of today's presentation is just to inform the group on the project motivation, the outcomes, and how we met the requirements of the FCM funding application. Brief agenda. This presentation, I'll go through some project background to describe the motivations and purpose behind the asset management initiatives. I will get into the details of the two asset managed initiatives. The first one being the Condition Assessment Programs, where I'll describe the objectives, methodology, results, and conclusions. And next, I will get into the Parks and Recreation Pilot Study, the second initiative, where again, I will go through the objectives of the project, describe the methodology results, and provide an update on the conclusion and recommendations. And finally, I'll allow some time for questions, if the group has any questions on the results of the project. So to begin, a brief background on the project. The town of Quispamcis completed its first asset management plan in 2019. This was the Comprehensive Asset Management Plan. It was a significant advancement for the town, but many opportunities still existed to improve the town's long-term planning capabilities. The Comprehensive Asset Management included policy, governments, document hierarchy, carried out a data quality review, state of infrastructure analysis, levels of service analysis, risk analysis, climate change, and expenditure forecasts, among some other items. As I said, the Comprehensive Asset Management Plan was a significant improvement on the existing practices, but opportunities for improvement did exist. Some of those examples included improving asset data for decision-making purposes, establishing desired levels of service targets, develop plans and strategies to meet those levels of service targets, and identify lifecycle management requirements. Based on these opportunities for improvements, among other motivations, RVA and the town identified two initiatives to take advantage of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, or FCM, funding opportunities, and to close the existing gaps, as I mentioned before. The two opportunities, or initiatives, excuse me, that were identified were the Condition Assessment Programs and the Recreation and Parks Asset Inventory Pilot Study. So to start, I'll describe the Condition Assessment Programs. The goal was to identify and standardize inspection programs for core asset categories to meet the town's current levels of service and capabilities. The outcomes were simple. We needed programs to describe in detail the proposed assessment methodology, needed to identify the frequency of assessments, and we needed to standardize inspection forms where applicable. To begin, or excuse me, this is the brief overview of the approach and methodology of the Asset Management Initiative. So to begin, we carried out a project definition and background data review, where we existed, reviewed the existed assessment methods and identified relevant asset categories to be included in our study. We carried out a literature review, which included an industry scan and research of the assessment methodology in use by municipalities in North America. Next, we completed a workshop with town staff, where we presented the literature review results. We discussed the preferred assessment, proposed, excuse me, assessment methodologies, and with the help of the town, we identified preferred assessment approaches. And finally, we needed to document the results and elaborate on the detailed programs in a final report, and this was presented again to the town, and feedback was received to, again, refine those results. So to begin, the project definition, we understood that the programs needed to be developed to collect current and reliable information on the performance of infrastructure. We knew the results will be used to facilitate long-term planning budgets, so to assess the current condition, but very important as well was to assess current maintenance requirements to ensure functionality. And we knew the methods can vary greatly in terms of complexity and costs. There's lots of assessment methodologies in use elsewhere by other asset owners, but we needed to identify appropriate methods based on the town of Quispamcis's specific needs and capabilities. On the right side of the screen, this is just a summary of the asset categories included in the study. Categories, I guess major categories were utility, public works, and parks and recreation infrastructure. So these were the asset types that RVA and the town developed detailed programs for. The literature review goal was to understand the variety of inspection methods and programs used by other asset owners to ultimately determine the best option for the town. So RVA attempted to identify multiple options per category. This was easy for some and much more difficult for others, but this was to present multiple options with varying complexity, costs, and resource requirements for town consideration. We learned of, through the literature review, we did learn of appropriate inspection cycles and reference standards, which is very important for the town to follow during subsequent inspections, and to ensure consistent, repeatable inspections as well. Results were presented to town staff during September 21st, 2022 workshop for discussion, and with important feedback received from the town, we were able to finalize the preferred inspection methodologies. Moving into the results and more of the detailed plans. We did develop inspection programs for all asset types identified on the previous screen. They, the programs included the recommended frequency of inspections, recommended inspection formats, so this could be digital, this could be video. We also, important, we documented reference standards that needed to be followed and adhered to in ongoing inspections, and we provided a description of resources required. So this could be a description of in-house resources required, or also third-party resources that needed to be contracted. In the programs, we also developed inspection forms, which can be integrated into town's asset management software, such as CityWorks, which is still being used by the town, and they can leverage some simple app, mobile applications to get the most out of the CityWorks software. And we also developed templates, I guess to clarify, inspection templates, using the existing corporate condition rating framework established in the 2019 Comprehensive Asset Management Plan, which is a simple and very effective framework to assign condition ratings based on standard guidelines. And you could see it summarize the generic condition rating framework summarized on the bottom of the screen in the table. So this is a sample inspection form. This is for manholes in particular. We did, with the help of the town, develop inspection forms for all assets recommended for visual inspection, so anything that could be completed in-house and not through third-party, and that would use visual inspection, uh, visual inspection approach. We did develop inspection forms for the town's integration into the current or future asset management software. The forms were developed to facilitate required maintenance, as I mentioned, that's an important part, to maintain current levels of service. But the primary goal was to assess current conditions, so the condition ratings of each component of the asset are summarized in tables at the back of the form, where inspectors can assign condition ratings based on standards and guidelines available to them. And condition ratings were included to allow for comparative benchmarking between assets, so it's important for the town to trend the inspections over multiple condition assessments to trend deterioration and understand how quickly the asset is failing. So to summarize the Condition Assessment Programs, our conclusions and recommendations included, we successfully developed a standardized program for each core asset category identified by the town and RVA. Programs are only a small part of lifecycle management strategies, so it's important to conduct these condition assessments in combination with regular maintenance, preventative maintenance, and any kind of manufacturer recommendations. Without those two working hand-in-hand, you won't have a successful asset management program. We also recommended the city, or excuse me, the town to use the mobile field data application, CityWorks, which is already used by the town, or they could use something that's compatible with it, Esri Field Maps, which we actually demonstrated in the next phase of work that I will describe. And finally, we did identify two training opportunities for the town to consider, just to improve long-term decision-making capabilities and inspection capabilities. The first being the Ontario Structure Inspection Manual, OSIM for short, which is widely used across Canada. It's a very simple and effective inspection methodology for bridges and bridge diameter culverts, and it also provides some methodology on surface inspections, and as I said, it's a simple and effective handbook to, you know, train your in-house inspectors. Secondly, the National Association of Sewer Service Companies, we recommended the PACP or MACP inspection certifications, which focus on pipeline inspections and manhole inspections. This will enable inspectors to carry out much more comprehensive inspections, and also interpret any results or reports that are provided by third-party contractors. So we felt that these recommendations would empower the town of Quispamcis to carry out inspections more effectively, and also interpret any inspections that are received from third-party contractors. The second phase of work was the Parks and Rec Pilot Study. The goal of the Parks and Recreation Pilot Study was to create a standard method to inventory and assess condition of outdoor park and recreation infrastructure at the Cuplex site. So RVA and the town of Quispamcis, through some, through multiple conversations, identified the Cuplex site as the pilot study site, and this was based on the variety of assets and complexity of the site. And important to note, this pilot study only focused on outdoor park and recreation infrastructure. It did not include the Quis, the Cuplex building or components within the building, just exclusively on outdoor Parks and Rec infrastructure. So just keep that in mind during the next few slides. Outcomes of the project were to carry out condition assessments at the Cuplex site, and also develop cost-estimating guidelines, as well as other standards and guidelines. We needed to inventory the pilot site assets, so this includes any fences, trails, sidewalks, poles, light fixtures, et cetera. We needed to inventory at the Cuplex site. We needed to demonstrate the data collection methodology using the Esri Field Maps application I mentioned before. And finally, we needed to document the results in a final state of infrastructure report, which included asset valuation, condition, risk, and levels of service analysis. So a brief overview of our approach and methodology. We began the other phase of work, the pilot study phase of work, with an inventory and data requirements. We needed to develop an asset data dictionary, you could call it, for inventory development and maintenance, which I'll get in more detail in the very next slide. We also had other guidelines and documentation that we needed to create to ensure that the city inventories and assesses asset condition in a consistent manner. Next, we needed to create the inventory of pilot site assets. So this was an initial asset inventory to be updated in the field, which was the next step. We conducted our site visit, which included more data collection using the standards and guidelines developed, and also condition assessment on any assets encountered in the field. And finally, we needed to document the results in the state of infrastructure report. So the first phase of work in this pilot study was to create a data dictionary, we call it. You could consider this a set of rules to collect and maintain the asset inventory. The data dictionary consisted of a relational data model, you could see on the left, and a more detailed data structure, which is indices of the assets and subtypes included in the, in each field. The relational data model and data structure was set up in a way where Quispamcis could report on any asset metrics at the facility or asset level, and this is an important flexibility to have, where the town can now report on any valuation or risk analyses at a field level. As an example, the James Rolfe Soccer Field, you could get the condition distribution or risk distribution at the facility level, or you could report on asset condition like courts or fields, asset inventory-wide. So irrespective of the facility, you could report on the actual asset inventory-wide. So it's important to build this flexibility in the system to meet any reporting requirements that could come up in the future. On top of the data dictionary, which is number one on the list here, we also developed other guidelines and standards, just to help facilitate consistent and repeatable condition assessments and asset inventory. So some other examples were the current replacement value unit pricing and estimated useful lives. So this is just as it sounds, we provide the town with indices of unit prices and corresponding estimated useful lives of all assets encountered at the Quispam, or at the Cuplex site, excuse me. We also created a condition assessment guidelines based on industry standards for outdoor parks and recreation infrastructure. And finally, we created a consequence rating criteria, which is used in the risk analyses and establishes proper consequence ratings for a given asset type. Important to note, the guidelines were presented and refined with the help of the town staff through multiple workshops at multiple stages of work. Training was provided to town staff during those workshops, and we demonstrated the use of the guidelines and the condition assessment and data collection methodology in the field to town staff. Once we had the guidelines and standards built, we developed an initial asset inventory using aerial imagery, and also, more importantly, the town of Quispamcis's existing GIS inventory, which was a huge help. The initial asset inventory was, was refined, and any additional assets through aerial imagery was added in. Next, we conducted a site visit to assess current condition of all assets encountered, and also collect any new assets encountered in the field that differed from the GIS inventory and the aerial imagery. And important to note again, that we did use all standards and guidelines developed as part of this project during this site visit, and tried to educate town staff while we were doing so, just to demonstrate the capabilities of the, the methodology that we were formalizing. This is a snapshot of the final asset inventory, and you could see the variety of assets encountered at the Cuplex site, and the wide, wide range of, of assets encountered. So into some of the data and numbers in the state of infrastructure report, this is a brief summary of the inventory and valuation at the Cuplex site. So based on all of the assets in the Cuplex inventory that we developed, the total current replacement value was estimated to be 3.3 million. You could see the counts in the middle column, or the quantity of each asset type, and the current replacement value, or CRV, in the right column. So some of the bigger items you could see were parking lots, or asphalt surfaces, fields, where massive costs as well, lighting, and we estimated that the current replacement value at the time of reporting was about 3.3 million. Some more detailed results here. On the left, you can see the condition distribution of assets encountered at the Cuplex site. This is reported in current replacement value, as opposed to asset quantities, because current replacement values are, you know, we wanted to compare apples to apples across asset type. So majority of assets are in a good to very good condition, and, or a very good to good condition rating, a one or two. We did find one culvert, which is a small cost in the grand scheme of things, about $19,000 replacement value. That was in a very poor condition, and this was already known by Quispamcis's staff, so it was no surprise to them, but that is the very poor rating that you see in that right column. that you see in that right column, the condition table. And similarly, the risk analysis results, you can see the distribution. More than half are insignificant to low risk rating. And as I mentioned before, the risk ratings are estimated using the current condition that was assessed in the field and multiplied by the consequence ratings established through RVA and town staff discussions. So still in the infrastructure report data analysis, we did provide recommendations to the town of QuispamSIS in the state of infrastructure report in a short, medium, and long-term planning horizon. Average annual costs for short term were about 3,000. Medium-term annual average costs were about 110. And long-term increasing again were estimated to be 143,000. Some of the recommendations included field resurfacing, you know, pole replacement, culvert replacement, trail restoration. And this was developed based on current condition assessment results. The recommendations, or I guess replacement needs for the town, were also represented in the 25-year capital plan forecast. In the biochar, you could see on the right side of your screen. So annual expenditures are estimated using a simple like-for-like replacement assumption. And the annual average investment requirement for the town is estimated to be about 100,000 over the next 25 years at the Cuplex site specifically to meet current levels of service. So again, this was assuming a simple like-for-like replacement at the end of the asset's service life, so. So in conclusion, we did successfully create a methodology to inventory and assess recreation and park infrastructure through important feedback with the town, I'll add. We demonstrated the methodology as well as all of the standards and guidelines at the Cuplex site. And this is reflective. We estimated the current replacement value of the Cuplex assets, the outdoor assets, to be roughly 3.3 million. Based on the results of the town and all the workshops and all the guidelines developed, RVA equipped the town with multiple guidelines to enable and consistent inventory and assessments. We feel this empowers the town to, for long-term planning capabilities and any future initiatives, should they apply this at other sites and hopefully apply this inventory-wide. We recommend the town continue to update, verify current replacement value unit rates. This is obvious to everyone nowadays, but this report was submitted, I think, last year. And with the cost of living, the COVID factor, all of those variables, increasing costs, these unit replacement values should be updated on a routine basis. It's also recommended the town expand on the current capital forecast model to include actual asset renewal and maintenance schedules and move away from the simple like-for-like replacement. This is a bit more complex and may be deployed at a more localized level, but this will ensure more accurate forecasts are developed. These are excellent forecasts for 25-year planning horizons, but when you're doing shorter-term forecasts, it's better to have more actual asset renewal and strategies built into the schedules. And it's also recommended the town develop an asset management master plan for outdoor park and recreation infrastructure. And this is more so to adopt this methodology to inventory and assess outdoor park and recreation infrastructure inventory-wide, not just at the Cuplex site. And I believe that's all I had. Thank you very much. On behalf of RVA, we really thank you for the opportunity. And I'll open the door to any questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mason, for the thorough overview of the asset management work that you've done. I will open the floor now to council to determine whether they have any questions or comments. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Mr. Mason, for your presentation. I'm glad to say not a lot of surprises there, so good job to the, to the team that's here. I did have one question on the recommendations, and I don't know if it's through you, Alex, or through, through the mayor to our director of engineering. I know that there is a couple of recommendation for inspectors of structural, but also inspectors of water and sewer, so the manholes. I'm just wondering, the actual need, the reason I'm saying need, I'll use sewer, not structure, but sewer is an example. Manhole covers, is it more intense than just the manhole covers? Because we're talking manhole covers. I mean, they're, some are hundreds of years old. I just don't know what the need is for that one right now or in the process, and how easy or hard is it for staff to, to get this certification? Thanks.
Thank you for your question. We'll go over to the director of engineering, Mr. Loge.
Thank you, worship. We're looking at the certification for our engineering staff. It's for the infrastructure as a whole, so not just the manhole covers, but the, the manhole, the pipelines, everything. The first part of the study that we had done was to make sure that the town can inspect our own infrastructure, assess values, assess conditions, and there's a standard form that we would use. So by taking these particular certifications, our staff can do that in-house without having to hire a third party to do that. It does a couple of things. Is it, is also enables us to do regular inspections in advance of our paving schedule. So we would identify the streets in our, in our streets capital schedule the year before, go through it and inspect the infrastructure, underground infrastructure prior to the paving. Then we know, okay, do we have to do just a resurfacing? Is there some underground work that needs to be done? And that's the intent is to have this all be in-house capacity. So that was one of the functions of this particular report was to, how, and FCM encouraged this as part of the grant program was, how do communities build their own in-house capacity? And by developing these templates, we can do that. The secondary component was with respect to the Cuplex site and that external facilities outside of the building itself. Now that, that we have some of these templates, we can use it for that. As Alex mentioned, the director of community services and our staff, very well-prepared. They have a lot of legwork already done. The attention to detail that they provided was sort of prefaced by the insurance components and, and the regular inspections and things of that nature. So it's a little advanced work that made this part of the work a lot easier to have done at this time, so. But it is all, the, the point of this part of the grant is, is getting building that in-house capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Schreier, please, who's with us virtually. Deputy Mayor, if you're speaking, we don't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was very interesting. And of course, the mass asset management program is so important to our town as we move forward. I guess my, my question is, I, I just want to understand how we are moving forward. And my question may be directed to the director of engineering and community services. I'm just wondering, like, there's certain assets that aren't on the list and where they would fall, such as in recreation, I see there's nothing referred to the boat launch in Means Co. And there's nothing in utilities talking about the pumping stations throughout the town. So I'm just wondering how, how we move forward and where they will fall into this as we do move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Go back to Mr. Loge, please.
Thank you, worship. If, if you recall, when we did our master asset management plan, that comprehensive asset management plan that we did two years ago, it looked at the community as a whole. And what was recommended is that we take each level of infrastructure and then have a specific review of that. So last year, we did the 10-year review of our street capital. If council would recall, in this year's budget, we've got money set aside for the water and utilities, an asset management review of that, condition assessments. That's actually gone out to an RFP right now. So we hope to have a recommendation coming to council in, in March for the meetings with a recommended consultant to tackle that. So we'll be looking at each of those silos, if you could call it. We'll probably look at, in the next budget in '24, a stormwater management, asset management review. So then, once we have all of these silos completed, then we would come back to council with a recommended approach to manage the, the infrastructure as a whole with some master asset management program, for example. With the specifics of the little items under each category, the boat launch as your example, by developing the community services model that we have now with the different templates, we can actually use the templates that were developed for those other pieces of infrastructure. So we can apply the same inspection schedule, the, the frequency, the condition assessment ratings, those types of things on the different levels and apply it that way. So that was the other part of this, as I mentioned earlier, about capacity building. We can take these, these templates and apply it for guide rails, signs, anything that's not specifically identified in the, in the plan that was reviewed. So it's, so it's, it's a, it's a work in progress. And it's something that we're trying to partner with FCM where we can. Hopefully, the next round of funding from the feds will introduce more money to the FCM so we can look at additional studies.
Thank you again, Mr. Loge. Was there a follow-up, Deputy Mayor?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mason of RV Anderson Consultants? Mr. Mason, I don't see that there are any. Counselor Thompson.
I would like to thank RV Anderson for their presentation and recommendations. And the reports be referred to town staff for incorporation into the town's comprehensive asset management plan. And the appropriate documentation be forwarded to FCM to meet the grant requirements and funding.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Counselor Thompson. Motion carried, seven zero. Have a lovely evening, Mr. Mason, and thank you for your presentation this evening. Onto item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, minutes of the previous meeting. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I've moved that the minutes be approved as prepared.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Onto item number eight, unfinished business. Elm Tree Development, 258 Hampton Road, PID number 251959, request to amend section 59 CPA development agreement. Counselor Bigger. Just one second, please.
Oh, that was Sarah, it's back. Thank you, your worship. I would, I would move that council approve the proposed amending development agreement for the purposes of execution of the agreement by the town and filing in the provincial land registry.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded, or sorry, moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Olson. I apologize, Counselor Bigger. It's been moved by Counselor Big, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. Just on the question, now that we were sending it in for, it's going to be registered, does this mean that they're going to start building there soon? Just a question. This has been ongoing for a little bit, so. Thank you.
And I will go to the director of engineering. The question was, are they going to begin building? So I will go to our planning officer, Mr. Dwight Colburn.
Thank you, worship, through you to Counselor Miller. So the anticipation is that they will be breaking ground as soon as they can, once the snow melts and conditions allow. So the next step is to get the final engineering drawings into us and go through the permitting process.
And Deputy Mayor Schreier has a question as well. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, to Mr. Colburn. I see that the removal of the lane has happened in the back. How will they now get access to the storage areas?
Through you, your worship. So the, the original idea was to basically have a throughway, if you will. So what they're going to do is slightly just modify. It was, the, the width did allow for some maneuverability in there. It was just more of an efficiency process of being able to come through there. So the current layout will allow for adequate movement into that particular area.
Anything further? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just so I'm clear, so the, the lane will still be there. I was reading in my kit here regarding the access laneway to the storage units located, revised site plan to address the concerns expressed by the residents. So the lane will still be there, as I understand it. It's just going to be a smaller lane. And will that allow us to have a bigger buffer to protect the residents in the back?
Through, you worship, a portion of the laneway that accessed the storage area originally went into the buffer. So it, it went, it came off one of the parking lots and then provided an alternate access through the buffer into the storage area. That portion of that laneway has been removed. So the buffer will not have to be encroached on in terms of the laneway. The access will simply be between the storage facilities.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the questions. Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Anything else? So it's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Onto item number nine, correspondence. Rezoning application 640091 NB Inc., Christine Sapola, 8 Leiden Drive, residential to commercial to increase parking space. And again, staff report from the planning technologists. Counselor Donovan.
I would move that council direct the town clerk to set a public presentation date for March 21st, 2023, and refer the proposed rezoning application to the planning advisory committee to review and provide comment to, to council on this matter pursuant to section 110 of the Community Planning Act.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item 9B, provincial funding for regional service commissions. Staff report from acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, your worship. I really don't have anything to add upfront in addition to the staff report, other than there is a typo where on the start of page two, it references council discussion of November 15th, 2002. Clearly, that's a typo, should be 2022. Happy to field any questions, but I really don't have anything else to add at this stage.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And we could. And we could, Counselor Miller, if you have a comment on that, would you please move and, okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
To receive the information, to receive and file.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, worship, and thank you to our acting CEO for the information. I realize that this is what we're being told and I'm happy for that. I guess I just want to make sure we are getting our fair share, and right now we are unable to do that because we can't see what the other ones are getting. So I guess what I would like to see, once the other regions have their funding finalized and what they're, how much they're paying into these funds too, I'd like to, at that time, kind of get an analysis on what our region looks like versus the other regions, not just for the, for this purpose, but also when the regional facilities, because I'd just like to compare because we're told we're being treated fairly, but we already had some issues with trade and convention centers, as an example. So it would be nice that once all these things are done to put it together so we can see. Because I remember when, I recall when this was first announced that the province was going to pay the LSDs for the first two years, and then there had a bucket there that said the province will pay up to one point nine million extra. And now we're saying we're getting a million, which is fine, but I guess I would like to see, when it's available, I know it's not right now, that once it's available, I'd like to compare us to the others, and I do thank you for the information. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. On the question. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Olson. Please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Item number ten, bylaws. Ten A, proposed zoning bylaw amendment number zero-three-eight-three-seven, re-regulating apiary operations or beekeeping. And a staff report was in your kit. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, worship. I'd move that council direct the town clerk to set a public hearing date for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to the Planning Advisory Committee to review and provide comment to the council on this matter.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I first want to thank town staff for doing such a comprehensive job, trying to take all the feedback from our last public hearing and kind of merging it into this new document. I'm actually wondering if, and I'm not sure if it could be an amendment to the motion, but because there was so much great feedback from the last time we actually discussed this in council, I'd want to make sure that our residents know that it is coming back for a hearing. And I know that with the Local Governance Act, we only have to put it on our website, but as we've acknowledged in the past, our website is due for an update. So what I'd like to ask is for an amendment that we also add, that we will post it on Facebook, since most of our residents use Facebook as a medium for communication so that they are aware of the date of March twenty-first. Thank you.
So there's a request for an amendment to the motion. Counselor Bigger.
Yes, thank you, worship. I actually wasn't going to speak to that specific point by Counselor Luck. Do you want to clear that up before I proceed with another question?
Okay, so it was moved by Counselor Olson. Counselor Olson, are you okay with an amendment to the motion?
Counselor Olson moved, seconded by Counselor Bigger.
Go ahead.
I'm fine with that, your worship, as long as we don't set a precedent that every time we have a rezoning that we're going to have to identify and notify everybody individually that has participated in the work up to that person's status. That's the only thing, I don't know, maybe staff would know if we've done that traditionally or not, but I'm just looking at setting precedents, that's all.
Okay, I'm going to go to the clerk, and then I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Place these notices on our social media, just on our website. However, we do certainly notify if it's a property within a hundred meter radius. In this case, for the original one, and we would again for this one, notify the concerned residents who wrote in, and also the provincial apiary, I didn't say that right, he notified the beekeepers in Quispam Sis. He didn't give us their names and that due to privacy, but he did make sure they were informed, and we would do that process again if that would satisfy council.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, worship. Just on that, I just wanted to echo Counselor Olson's concern. I don't, I want to make sure that we follow the process for every zoning application or rezoning or public hearing. And so it's important to me that the process is followed. So I would like staff to really direct us on this if that is appropriate for us to do that. And I really don't think it's following the process, and I want to ensure that we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. I just had a question regarding the, in the draft bylaw amendment under section twenty-six, offenses and penalties. Part B indicates any person who contravenes any of the provisions of this bylaw is guilty of an offense and liable on summary conviction to a fine as outlined in Schedule A of the Community Planning Act of New Brunswick, S and B twenty-seventeen, C nineteen. And I went looking for that, and I just couldn't find that. And I wondered if there's anybody present tonight who can speak to what that represents, or where, or perhaps this could just, we could be supplemented with that information if, you know, a link if nothing else. Perhaps I'm the only one who couldn't find that, but I went looking for it and wasn't able to locate it. So I was curious about what, you know, the dollars and cents of that is, for example, or what have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to address that? Mr. Loishay, please.
Your worship, the provincial summary charges changes regularly, and what we can do, we can undertake to ensure that we have that available for the presentation evening, so we can make sure we have the most relevant fine information.
Thank you. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, worship. I'm just wondering if maybe just so it doesn't kind of dilute the motion, if we can have a discussion about my request, I guess, after it's, like, this one is voted on. I guess, like, I have the Local Governance Act pulled up, and it basically says, you know, we have to put the notice on our website. But it says if a local government has given notice in a manner authorized by subsection one, which would be the website, may also post the notice on social media. And I guess I've noticed more and more that other municipalities are using Facebook and other social media streams. And I think as part of our strat plan, we talked about improving engagement with our residents and improving communication. And we've already acknowledged as a council that our website is dated and needs to be updated, and it's very hard to find stuff on our website. And I think when we look at the kind of following on our Facebook page, we actually get more uptake. So I think I would like to kind of explore, you know, it's not really precedent setting, but perhaps we should be doing this as a best practice, no matter what announcement we're making. So yes, I'm asking for it for this, but I think that it might be something a bit broader where, when we're doing an announcement to the public, that we also add into our actions is just posting the same thing that we post on our website onto our Facebook page so it reaches more of our residents. So I don't know if that would be, that may be a second motion afterwards, just so then it's kind of clear that we're doing it moving forward versus just specifically for this bee issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Ms. Snow, I don't know if that requires a motion or if that's something that I can speak to the CAO about, and perhaps we can discuss putting that in motion with his staff. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you, your worship. I believe if we think back to the public hearing last summer where the council chambers were packed on that particular night, I think there was another issue that was being discussed that night as well. But there were certainly a lot of people here to discuss the situation with the bees in Quispam Sis. I also don't believe we ever posted that on any of our social media channels. So one could easily argue that that information got out without us putting it on social media. The potential downside to putting that type of thing on our own social media, specifically Facebook, allows the court of public opinion to try the case before the actual public hearing, which is when that is supposed to take place here before council, rather than following those types of debates on social media. Certainly, I suspect that the media is following this tonight, even though they're not physically here. We know they're watching and listening. One of the local radio stations has a Facebook page that generates interest in those sorts of things. It ends up on news chaser sites. So I really don't think we need to be concerned with that information getting out. It seemed to get out quite well last time, and I'm sure it will get out quite well this time as well. But if we are concerned after the fact that people may not know about this, we could certainly post it, but it would create a precedent, and then, you know, if there's another public hearing and for whatever reason we didn't do it or it was overlooked, and then someone says, well, you didn't follow the process. Well, we did follow the process in the Local Governance Act, which we always ensure that we do. But if this was a one-off that we just decided to do this, but if council wants to make it a policy, you know, there are certainly some pratfalls with that, and that, you know, goes back to my initial comment that all of a sudden we have people debating that on the town's Facebook page prior to the public hearing process before council.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, worship, and thank you to acting CEO Aaron Kennedy for the, kind of, the insight. I guess one question I do have, because that was something that I wasn't really thinking about. I was really thinking about just reaching more residents around the bee issue or around any issue that we want to get the word out, because I think people use Facebook a lot more than websites these days. So that was really more my, you know, bigger concern. But I'm wondering if I can ask a question through you to our communications person, Tim. I don't know, sorry. And, because it's my understanding that you can also turn comments off on Facebook. So could we not, I guess, do something so we could get the word out? I guess, really, at the end of the day, the fundamental ask I'm having is, you know, one of the things we want to do is reach more of our residents and increase our engagement. And, you know, when it comes to the bees, I know there was a lot of other people kind of sharing that information, so it did get out. But I think just in general, kind of moving forward and looking at engagement of residents and improving our communication strategy, I think it would be a good, a best practice.
Thank you. And were you going to respond, Mr. Rosell?
Through you, your worship, Counselor, yes, it is conceivable that you can turn comments off on any post on Facebook, you know, should the need arise. That in itself can set a precedent that, you know, that the town may or may not want to address over the course of time. You know, as it stands right now, members of the public can comment on just about anything that we have up on any of our social media accounts, as long as their, you know, their comments are within the boundaries of good taste and things like that. But, you know, I'm open to the will of council if it is something that council would like to do moving forward where notices of public hearings are, you know, put on social media along with simply the website itself, then, you know, I'll certainly heed the direction of council at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Rosell. We have a motion on the table, proposed zoning bylaw. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, through your worship, I see that it's added on to the motion that also be advertised on Facebook. It's, yeah, it's on there now, but we'll see. I just think the same as our CAO has stated is that, you know, it will be debated before we have an opportunity to even look at it. You know, on the website, you can look at it, you can read it, you're not going to be debating it. On Facebook, it definitely will be debated ahead of time. So I'm just kind of a little bit leery of even setting that precedent of having it advertised on Facebook before we have, we have the opportunity to even have a public hearing. You know, the, you know, we have to have the public hearing just, you know, for the bylaw amendment. So by the time, you know, this all instantly goes on Facebook, it'll be well decided by the court of public opinion before we have an opportunity to even have the public presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, worship. I would perhaps suggest that we consider parsing this discussion out for the sake of moving forward on this motion and have a more fulsome discussion on what is an important discussion, I think, about how to optimize being communicative with the public about the affairs of council. I don't think there's anything wrong with, at all, with Counselor Luck's, you know, advocacy for adding that as a, maybe as a best practice as she described it. But I would just suggest perhaps, for the sake of expediency on this one particular issue, you know, let's not hang it all up on this one, rather, let's just move forward on this motion as it was presented in our package and perhaps have a broader discussion separately. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Acting CAO, please.
I apologize, your worship. I turned my light on before Counselor Bigger's comments, but I certainly appreciate where he's coming from. What might be a simple solution to this is if we, and I know that there are other municipalities that say our next council meeting is on this particular night, check out the agenda at this link, and you really avoid the comments there within the social media post itself so that we could simply say, you know, tomorrow after a council meeting tonight, or maybe again, as we get closer to the date of the public hearing, assuming the council sets that date this evening, is just say, for upcoming public hearings in Quispam Sis on issues of concern to our residents, go to this link and link them to the Facebook page, and then the people who are interested will do that. It's similar to when we started with our live streaming of the meetings. During COVID, we had a very rudimentary process for getting our council meetings onto social media, and we put it directly into Facebook. Now we don't. Now it goes through this, you know, very robust system that we have here in terms of audio and visual technology, that it goes directly to our YouTube page, and then it's kept there likely forever for posterity's sake. So we did make some changes there as well, but that might be the simplest resolution that perhaps would get to the root of the issue that Counselor Luck was referring to is that we would advertise our public hearings and just force people to click onto that one link that would take them directly to the next slate of public hearings that are coming before council.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The motion on the table, that council direct the town clerk to set a public hearing date for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and refer to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to the Planning Advisory Committee to review and provide comment to the council on this matter. So we have not included that. All right, on the question, please. Please vote now. Motion carried six-one with the nay vote, Counselor Donovan. Item ten B, review of proposed changes to council code of conduct, bylaw number zero-five-six, and a staff report from town clerk. And this is for consideration of first and second reading. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, worship. I'd move council to give first reading to proposed bylaw.
Thank you, worship. I'd move council give first reading to proposed bylaw amendment number zero five six dash zero one.
Is it?
A bylaw of the municipality of Quis Pam Sis respecting the council code of conduct.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, worship. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, the committee for going back and taking some of our, uh, concerns and clarifying them. I think that, uh, the new additions do help clarify the, the bylaw. I do have one other clarity or question for clarity. Um, under, on page five, under sanctions, I noticed that there was an additional sanction that was included. And I, while I don't have any issue with the sanction, um, which was removal of all town devices, and if personal devices are used, access to town email and all software used for town business be revoked. The question I have is, can, I, I guess, nowhere in these sanctions do we say removing someone from council. So I'm not sure if we can legally do that, but you're taking the tools away for someone to do their job as a counselor. So I just didn't know if legally that could be done. And if that can be done, then perhaps we need to add something else about removing, like, people for a certain amount of time from council, because if you're taking the tools away so they can't, you know, can do their role as a counselor, um, it just seems like there's something missing. And I'm not sure if, you know, as council, we have that power to remove someone from council, but if we don't, I'm not sure if we can remove the tools that they need to do their job. So I just needed some clarity on that. Thank you.
Just on one of the questions that you had, yes, we do have the power to remove an elected official from power if they ha- are in contravention to the code of conduct for counselors. So now I'll go to Ms. McGuinness, uh, our assistant clerk.
I just wanted to let you know that, uh, Deputy Mayor Squire is wanting to talk.
I will go to Deputy Mayor Squire, please.
Um, my, mine's not a big question. It's just a, a different, um, wording. It would, it's been changed to the council code of conduct, conduct, um, versus, um, code of ethics. So I, I, I wasn't aware of that change. Just, um, it's just a different word, but I wanted to make sure everybody, um, saw that. And I'm anxious to hear what you, um, the C E O has, um, regarding the question by Counselor Luck. Thank you.
Uh, just on that, uh, it's always been referred to as the code of conduct for counselors. So it, it was not the code of ethics. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I guess I was just, uh, looking for, I guess, some clarity, because if, and I don't have any issue with keeping that in, but I'm wondering if we are keeping the newest addition in, where you're going to remove town devices, would it not make sense to also a- add as one of the sanctions, what we discussed, which was removing them from council? It says suspension or removal from some or all council committees and bodies for which council has the right to appoint members, but it doesn't say anything about council itself. So I just don't know if that's missing.
I'm going to go to Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the comment about the town devices, I think when the committee met and that was included, um, perhaps, I don't want to get into hypothetical situations, I'm not going to throw any out, but if there was a code of conduct breach involving improper use of an electronic device, then perhaps that might be a legitimate sanction, an eye for an eye, so to speak. Um, in terms of suspending or removing, uh, a member from council, um, certainly a suspension is a legitimate means, an illegal means of, um, punishment. And this council, uh, a previous edition of this council has proven that that, uh, is the case, and that can be done. So, you know, the, the town devices were just put in there. Again, is that preventing somebody from doing their job? Well, probably not. They could still use the telephone if they weren't, uh, suspended from council. There would just be some other ways of, uh, of talking to constituents, and if they had their own personal computer and, you know, Gmail account or whatever, what have you. But I think that was basically there just in case there was an issue that a breach of the bylaw occurred, um, by using a town device, that that might be a, uh, an acceptable, uh, punishment, um, for that breach.
Uh, I'll go to the clerk, Ms. Snow, please.
Counselor Luck raises a good point in that we could provide more clarity when it says suspension or removal from some or all council committees and bodies to which council has the right to appoint members. It should clearly say that council has the right to suspend the member from council, is where you're going. And I, that would be probably the case where the devices for that period of the suspension would be removed. So we can, before consideration of third reading, rework the wording there to provide better clarity on that.
Good. Perfect. Thank you. So it's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. And second reading. Counselor Miller, please.
Proposed bylaw amendment zero five six dash oh one, a bylaw municipality of Quis Pam Sis respecting the council code of conduct.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. Onto item eleven, new business, eleven A, Maple Ridge Estates, Phase Five B subdivision plan. Pid number two, three, one, nine, two, eight, Rugged Residential, Inc., council ascent, staff report and development officer, from development officer. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm prepared to move council grant ascent to the Maple Ridge Estates Phase Five B subdivision plan as per section eighty-eight, one of the Community Planning Act, so the development officer can approve the plan for registration with the province. The council ascent is subject to the execution of a development agreement containing specific terms that control the release of development and building permits until such time as the developer fulfills all work to the satisfaction of the town engineer or designate as per the town's subdivision bylaw.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. Item eleven B, application for financing for twenty twenty-two street capital. Staff report from town treasurer. Counselor Olson, please.
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, resolve that the clerk and/or treasurer and/or mayor be authorized to issue and sell to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation a municipality of Quis Pam Sis debenture in the principal amount of six hundred thousand dollars on such terms and conditions as are recommended by the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation, and be it resolved that the municipality of Quis Pam Sis agree to issue postdated checks payable to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation as and when they are requested in payment of principal and interest charges on the above debenture.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question. Welcome, Ms. Brandon. I don't see any questions. Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. Item eleven C, proposed adjustments to purchasing authority. Staff report from town treasurer. And we have a motion in front of us. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, worship. Uh, the council approved the following: increasing the purchasing limit for operations supervisors from twenty-five hundred dollars to five thousand; two, increasing the threshold for requiring a procurement report from twenty-five hundred dollars to five thousand; and three, addition of unbudgeted construction approvals of up to ten thousand dollars for directors. And the, that administration integrate these charges into the updated purchasing policy, coming to council for full approval in March twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question. Uh, Deputy Mayor Squire, please. Please turn your mic on, Deputy Mayor.
Can you hear me now? Sorry about that.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Uh, I was just wondering about number two, um, increasing the threshold for requiring procurement report, um, from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. I know it mirrors, um, the above number one in the amounts, but I just wonder about the, why we would not have, uh, reporting of, um, a purchase.
I will see if Ms. Brandon is available to respond to that. Ms. Brandon, if you're there.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Um, so yes, it is in alignment with, um, so right now, our current purchasing policy is anything over the twenty-five hundred dollars, which is kind of the lowest threshold, requires procurement report. So what we're doing now is matching our lowest level of approval with when we do require a procurement report. Um, so again, it's, it's about, you know, we have internal controls in place to, to, to verify all of, all of our expenditures. And it, it's just bringing that threshold a little bit higher and saying, under five thousand dollars, our professional staff through our, you know, decentralized purchasing have the ability to purchase those items underneath five thousand dollars. Um, you know, they're still welcome to get quotes and, and anything required to make sure that they're getting the price, best price. And a lot of them do, do that as well. We're just making that official requirement for a procurement report to line up with our, um, kind of lowest level purchasing authority of limit, so that they're, they're matching. It just makes the most financial sense to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. Item number twelve, reports. Counselor Donovan, please.
I would, uh, move that report to be received and filed.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question. Counselor Olson, did you have a comment on any of those? Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. Item number thirteen, business arising from committee of the whole Kay Gordon Consulting and Associates Compensation Review for salaried employees, twenty twenty-three. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, worship. I'd move council ratify the motion made at the February seventh, twenty twenty-three committee of the whole meeting to accept the proposal from Kay Gordon Consulting Limited to conduct a compensation review for salaried employees as outlined in the project work plan dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, for a total fee of eighteen thousand four hundred based on eleven point five days of work.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question, please. Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. And as with all of our meetings, we do allow for electronic, uh, joining of any counselors to join us electronically. And, uh, tonight we have, as I said, uh, Deputy Mayor Squire and, uh, our tre- town treasurer, uh, Krista Brandon. So I just wanted to let you know that we, we, we do permit that. We are streaming and happy to be able to do that and to, uh, have you at home able to watch us. So I'm now looking for an adjournment. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Wishing everybody joy in the coming days and, uh, looking for your votes now. Please vote now. Motion carries seven, zero. Have a good rest of your evening and safe travels home. Good night, everyone.